United States of America and to the Republic which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty, justice for all. We have, if I'm correct, what I'd like to do is hold public comment to the end. We can deal with it then. Allow people to actually uh talk to anything else that um. We've already discussed, so it'll allow public comment to uh add to some of our discussion. It's kinda harder with those that are calling in via phone. Um what we've done previously, uh when we don't know who's in attendance, we have. Called out and we'll try again. We have a one phone call in that ends with three, four, one, eight. If uh you could um identify your name, we can update it with your name. So if you do have something, we can uh. Call you by name.
That's me, Helen Gooden-Tamplar. I'm on the computer and I'm also on the phone because we don't have um my audio and. Video did not wa- work on my town computer. So it might be different number every time I call in too because of all of the extensions through the Henrywood building.
Alright, well now we know. Um with that. Um going through the agenda, um. We can start with. The covid virus and town update regarding annual town election. I know you're on the line, Helen. Um. Last we left it, we postponed the election and um you're going to kinda review and come back to us with a proposed uh date. And other information related to the ele- election. Um are you ready to kinda present your recommendations?
Uh sure. Um I am gonna recommend that we set the date of the annual town election for June thirtieth. And with the hours from twelve to eight. And to be held at both polling locations. And I know at the last meeting, there was a question as to whether or not the annual town election had to be held before town meeting. And it does not. So it doesn't matter if we have town meeting first or election first. That it's they're irrelevant. They're independent of each other. So I just wanted to make sure that that was clear. I'm also going to recommend that we really um as we talked about last, last time was um. Push the absentee and the early voting as much as possible to get people to vote by mail. Um and we will um. Need to do a revised warrant. And when we do that, we could send out maybe absentee ballot applications with the warrant, I mean with the notice. Um and maybe a reverse nine-one-one call at some point, reminding voters to that they can vote early for this election. And really just get the word out for people to um vote by mail.
Wanted to double check. Were we planning on annual town meeting on the twenty-third or the sixteenth? I forget.
Yeah, the tenth. Sixteenth.
Okay. What are, what are your thoughts, Greg?
I just don't know why we're pushing out so late.
Why pushing the election out so late?
Yes.
We just think that that would be best.
Why?
We have until the, that's the last possible day that we can push the election out until. And I feel that that would give us ample time to get as many people to vote early by mail as possible and to reduce the number. Of people um trying to come to the polls to vote. And it just made sense to, I think. Um just set it for. Set it for then and that gives ample time to get election workers lined up and if we have to train new workers and to. Basically process all the absentees because if we're gonna be getting all these mails mailed back in as well, it's gonna take time to. Entered into the state system. A ballot needs to be entered into the state system.
I'm just uncomfortable pushing things off to the eleventh hour. That's all. If if that's a way you guys wanna do it, then you know.
Yeah, it doesn't change, like all of the elected officials that are up for election will still continue to serve in their capacity. Until their um successors have been elected and sworn in. Um. I. I don't know, I just, I just felt that this way with everything so unknown with the covid nineteen and. Um trying to get as many people to vote. Remotely as possible through the mail. We thought it was so longer we could hold off, the more of a. A better turnout we would have by mail to reduce the numbers of polls.
One thing I would.
Go ahead.
The one thing I would add to kinda support what Greg is saying is the other possibility in life. That could affect. An election is. Like an act of God, you know, be it a tornado races through the, the night before or. Who knows what, but if we do it on the thirtieth and that's the day an act of God hits, we're gonna be. In a crack that hasn't been legislated for on how to uh reschedule that, I'm guessing. So it might. Be better to give us at least one week to. Push it out another day without asking the state for special privileges. And I'm just curious if. Moving it up a week to the twenty-third might be better just so that in the event something potentially crazy does happen. We just remove one more obstacle and just rescheduling and moving it another day. I just don't know what your thoughts are on that.
I would be fine with that.
I think that's a good idea, Matt.
What's your thoughts about that, Greg? Do you think the twenty-third might be better to give us a little room to breathe?
Yeah, that's what I was gonna suggest. I just don't like pushing anything to the, to the limit. It's just. Yeah, it's like trying to tell your kids to do homework. You don't put it off till the last minute. Something comes up, you, you get it done early. If you need to fix something or research something, you have time. I just, I just don't like pushing anything to the end of the envelope.
And, and I'm fine with that.
Okay. Are we also comfortable with the uh, the twelve to eight with uh pushing for the increased absentee slash early voting? The idea there is that also helps reduce the congestion. So twelve to eight is actually just. My guess is i- it helps with our, our election poll work was not having to work like. Seven to eight or whatever, or eight to eight, gives them less of a length of time to work. Um. And hopefully, the, the rush times or the congestion won't increase. Because people aren't able to get in in the first four hours of the day, but. It's something we should talk about. It is what they're recommending is twelve to eight. So I didn't know what your guys' thoughts were. Start with you, Greg.
My thoughts, as I said before, no. Uh change it as little as possible. There's some people, you know. Some people, good number of people are still working. So some simply can't make it early or can't make it late. Um some, so some that window early in morning is important to some people. And rather than them have to adjust and have to do an, an early ballot or, or write-in ballot or something. I wanna leave the normal avenues open, everybody. And I, I think, you know. Postponing it, as you know, I didn't like in the first place, but. Changing as little as we can for the public, I think is, is uh being more responsible. And uh there's probably a lot of people that count on those early morning hours to, to get out and vote. And we don't know. If everybody may be back to work or at least most of us may be back to work by then or, or what they're gonna do, you know? I just don't, I don't wanna cut people's hours out, you know?
What are your thoughts about it?
Um, well, I would counter that. Um. Just based on if they have ample time to put in a ballot early by mail. If, if losing those first few hours in the morning is a big hindrance on them, um they can always do it early, but I do. See the point, uh Greg, your point on that to try to change it as little as possible for people, but. Um E- Ellen, the, your recommendation was twelve to eight. Do you have ample people lined up, or would you say to? Do the full uh eight to eight or?
Um as I mentioned before, I, I don't anticipate this is gonna be a, a very large turnout election. We generally don't pull a lot of voters. For a town election, especially one that doesn't have many contests. Um we have two contests on this ballot. One for planning board and one for board of health, which generally doesn't pull a lot of, a lot of voter turnout. Um, you know, looking at even the primary election, we had a thirty, like thirty percent of the voter turnout. Um, I, I would expect that we would probably have even less for the town election. But. I just that reducing the hours would be. A little more conservative on the towns end as well as less exposure for election workers.
We um, do we historically have an idea of? Numbers that show up at different times of day?
Um I do have records of that. I don't have it right. I don't have it readily available, but we do keep um in the precinct book, um times of when people, you know, the vote count. Every hour to see what the amount of voters that come in.
Okay.
So and that, the twelve tape was also recommended what most um other towns do for their town, you know. When they change their hours, that's a fairly um generalized time for cities and towns. That change their hours.
Okay. So. I think we're all set with the precincts, correct? We'll, we'll keep both open to that normally. That's your recommendation.
Yeah.
I think the board and we'll, we'll vote on it obviously, but I think in our discussion, we all agreed June twenty-third would work. Um, so the question now is more the twelve to eight. Um. I definitely understand Greg's position. Um and then you add in human nature. Uh you send people a revised date and they, they read it and the next day they may think. Election day is the twenty-third and I have from eight to eight. It despite it being put right in front of them. Kind of, we tend to read what we think we wanna read. And so. I kinda see the point of reducing hours in a situation like this where. There's so much information flying at people all the time with various reasons to do this or to do that or change this or change that. I could see it easily confusing someone and then. They don't come in to vote. You know, early thinking they could come in late or vice versa. And then they gotta work late, so they miss their chance in the morning when they thought they would have been there because they just didn't read it right. So. And I see the point that Dylan brought up and the point you're bringing up, Ellen. Um. I would say in this situation, I think I would have to. I think I would have to kinda defer to what Greg was bringing to the table here and I think uh the full day is something that. I think we should stick to. There's a lot of routines that have changed and this would be just one more thing people have to catch up to and learn. So for those that don't take part in the early voting or the absentee voting, um. I would like them to be able to just plan on election day as the normal election day. Um. So I'm kind of. Yeah, I guess I've made my statement there. So I don't know if we. If, if the board thinks we're ready to present a motion and vote on it, or if you want further discussion before we even get into that level. Do you have anything more you wanna say on this, Greg, before we? Potentially take action?
No, I, I, I certainly understand that the idea would be if someone couldn't make it in the morning. They can go get a ballot and do the early, early voting. However, that will put in the onus on them. To, to do something because we've changed the hours on them. You know, I, I don't wanna put. Anything on somebody that now there's something they can't make voting hours. So now they have to jump through a hoop. Um to, to make up for it. I really want people to have, you know, the, the available voting. And I think adding the, the availability for people to mail it in is great. It, it, it increases. The ease for people to get a vote in. I don't wanna do anything to decrease that, uh which I think cutting the hours back would, so. You've already moved it. Um we're already giving them ample ways to, to vote without having to show up in person. Um it really doesn't increase exposure, as I heard Ellen say to the, to workers. Your exposure isn't being in the same place for. You know, eight hours versus twelve hours. Your exposure is greater number of people. In theory, that's not gonna change. Um, you know. The only way that changes is if we cut voters out. And certainly don't wanna do that.
No, and I'm fine. I'm happy eight to eight as well.
Okay.
Um I just, yeah, we were just trying to reduce it, like I said, to try to eliminate exposure for voters, meaning. Um for the workers so that we could, you know, we didn't have to split shift. And get more people rather than less people. That was, that was kind of.
I understand, but I think you see why we're, we're, we're just worried about cutting people off by taking hours away from them, so. I'd go ahead and make a motion that we um set the annual town election for April twenty-third from eight AM to eight PM.
Ju- uh June.
Yes, sorry. I'll restate that. Strike that motion. I'll make a motion that we set the annual town election. For June twenty-third from eight AM to eight PM. Thank you, Dylan.
Yeah, I will second that motion.
Do we think this specific wording used at references in accordance to chapter forty-five of the Acts of twenty-twenty? Should be included because of, it kinda is what justified our ability to move this date?
Yeah, probably. If you have that in front of you, I'd have to go look for that again to pull it up.
I do. I'll, I'll, I'll just read it out if you'd like, unless you wanna do it, Dylan.
Just restate it with that and just make the motion, that's all. It's, it doesn't matter who makes it.
You seconded Dylan, so go ahead and just restate it based on your second.
Sure, um with my se- um, let's see. With my second, uh we'll move that the municipal annual town of Berry election originally scheduled for Monday, April sixth, twenty-twenty. Beheld on Tuesday, June twenty-third, twenty-twenty from eight AM to eight PM in accordance with chapter forty-five of the Acts of twenty-twenty.
Second, oh that is the second, right?
Do we have any further discussion?
Um I just wanted to let you know also that I don't think we'll need to change the, we post the warrant if we're not changing. Location or time. I think we can, um we just need to notify people of the date.
How are we doing that? Were you planning on sending out a letter that also explained to people how to do the absentee slash early voting process or? How are we getting that out to our people?
We were going to advise them of the new election date through a reverse nine-one-one. And then we can do a mailing of, uh like a postcard mailing to everybody, letting them know. That the date has been changed as well and instructions to vote early or absentee.
I would recommend that we, we do the uh, the book card type mailing because. Not everybody signs up for nine, reverse nine-one-one or is. Probably diligently following up on websites and Facebook updates, so um. I think the mailing would be key and it would probably also be the thing that'll help you get more early votes and absentee votes accomplished between now and then. Well, I'll call for a vote. Uh Greg?
Sullivan, yes.
Clark, yes.
Matt Urban, yes. Okay, one more item that is related to elections, I believe. It, it falls in a different agenda item, but it's down under uh appointments. I don't know if you gentlemen have seen, but we have. Several new appointments and existing appointment or personnel to be reappointed. Um in the agenda, there's a chart that Ellen provided and, or Heather provided, or they both provided us. And it lists all of the election poll workers that are either currently due to expire. This year, is it Ellen or as of April?
Um the current election list, I believe expires June thirtieth. That's what we've done in the past is they get appointed annually. And generally, we've been trying to keep all the appointments on a um July first to June thirtieth date. Just so that we can better track them because our, obviously our computer system, the database. Works better if you have that date, then we can just pull up the report of everybody that expires on June thirtieth for the next. Um year's annual appointment.
Okay.
And then the new, we had some new um volunteers that came forward um. To work elections, so. They were listed on that list all as new, which ones were new. So they need to be appointed and I, I think it rather than have them only appointed till June thirtieth, it makes more sense to just do one. Do the reappointment now and have everybody good until June thirtieth of next year. This way that takes us through the September primary election and the November election. And then we would only need to appoint any other new people that might come afterwards.
Okay, so. I'm gonna read off the new people. The list itself, I'm not gonna read everybody. But the new people that have uh volunteered to participate. Starting uh alphabetical order by last name would be John Chase, Robert Coy, Williams Lloyd. Minari Lucia. Margaret Petricone and Silas Sherrill. That is the new. Applicants. Um, I would make a motion to. Approve renewing all existing on that list as well as the new. And carry that through June thirtieth, twenty-twenty-one. Um technically expiring at midnight.
I'll second your motion.
Any further discussion? Okay, call for a vote?
Sullivan, yes.
Clark, yes.
Matt Urban, yes. Okay. Um. I know we have another panelist on that. Fits under personnel committees. So what I would like to do right now is um invite the chief of police. Uh to present a, a recommendation, suggestion, or just a point to the board. Uh regarding vacation time. So. Chief Carbone, um I'd like to give you the floor.
Thank you. So we have the situation. I just wanted, the, the facts of the situation are that. The contract allows a certain amount of carryover. But some officers will be in it, will have more than that. They've been. Given a directive that they can't take vacation time while we're in this emergency. So there's our problem. I would like uh to get a um ruling from you and I would ask that you or Heather consult um. The labor attorney to see what our options are, just to let you know that we. You know, I'm just waiting to hear from you as to how you wanna handle as a town and just to let you know that the department does have. Um I, I calculate out based on what the officers have reported, less than twenty-five days total that we have to pay to the. Union members and then add myself. I'm not saying you have to pay me. Um saying I have some days over, not many. And um Amy Reed does as well. So I just wanted to make you aware of that and ask you to uh let me know which way you want me to go.
Okay, um I do know that. A couple other departments have brought this up. I'm not necessarily saying uh directly to the board, but I've heard it. Whether I was just on the street talking to different department heads or not. Um but because of that, it, it does seem to be more of a. Townwide employee discussion. And I know that um the finance team is trying to figure out what that might cost the town if we did that. And the potential implications in FY twenty-two. Um. And I have not asked Heather, but I do believe it's something that either she was planning on or. Waiting for us to ask her to do is to reach out to Fred to figure out how it affects our various union contracts. Um and then just labor law in general across the board. Um I don't know what the other selectmen. Go ahead, Greg. Let you go.
My, my, you know, the first thought is you let them do one or the other, how, get paid or, or take the time, you know, extend it, but. We're concerned right now about our budget for next year and I think any extra spending is unwise. Um but if. Whatever length of time we wind up having this state of emergency in effect. I'd like to, eh, at the minimum, extend their carryover through that many more months. Or potentially just let them carry over until the next fiscal year. And leave the hours in the books for, for one more year to let them have more leisure time to use it, cause. There's only certain times of year people go on vacation. You know, this April vacation probably would have been one of them. Uh so to make them use it the next couple of months while off of this quarantine, I don't think is really a. A fair thing to do. So if we're gonna do anything, I would prefer that we let the people carry the excess hours until. Next year's cutoff date.
Do you have anything to add, Dylan?
Uh no, what, what Greg said makes sense to me if it, if it checks out with uh. With Heather and it checks out with labor council, it sounds good to me.
If I could add that one thing, the summer is our worst time for um, you know, vacation costs. That's where we spend most of our money. So given the police department allows by contract each union member to hold over ten days. And they tend to do it. Uh anything in excess of that is gonna be very expensive and hard for us to manage if they can take it during the summer. I believe what Greg said is true, you know, the right thing to do. But I just wanna point out to you that. If all of a sudden I have a guy taking three weeks vacation in the summer instead of, he was gonna take two and they all do that, it's going to be a very. Difficult thing to manage and very expensive.
Agreed. One of the other things that. I mean, I can only speak on my behalf. I don't have a clue how most people live, but. Um, I'm lucky enough in a job I have, I get three weeks of vacation. Um but they don't let you roll it over. You use it or lose it at the end of the year. Um and that's just the way it is. Um. But still, I generally take. One week of vacation for my grand vacation. I use one week for two or three long weekends maybe. And then the other one. Is so I can take time to deal with stuff around my house. I'm not going. I'm not going on a vacation, I just need to get a day away from work so I can work on my house or something. I don't, like I said, I don't wanna say this is what other people are doing. And I understand that some of the public safety might be harder to. Kinda like you had mentioned Chief, you kinda had to say you can't take vacation right now because of the needs of the department. And the way you had to kinda revise your shifts. But if somebody didn't say you can't take vacation, you can still use it for other things than going to Disneyland. And it's your choice if you wanted to take vacation and stay home and not work, or even if you're. Planning on working remotely, you can say I'm taking vacation, I'm not working from home either. So there is a part of me, and I know this doesn't sound nice and all that, but. Vacation kinda is a use it or lose it, roll over what you can within the limits of the the personnel policy. But the intent of limiting rollover is so you don't end up with somebody having eight weeks of vacation that they wanna take. I mean. You can't have a full-time employee take two months off. And figure out you can balance the budget or maintain the workload. I think that's that's putting a lot on any one department head to figure out how to do that. So it's a concern of mine to try to figure out how across the board we can have a consistent rule that doesn't. Bury a department or something like that, I mean, we all know, we have one town accountant. I don't think, I know she's got an assistant she can fill in, but. That's a lot of vacation time that if we lost a town accountant for eight weeks because this is a blanket role and I'm not saying. It's wrong, I'm just saying that it it does put a big complication in some of our departments, cuz a lot of them aren't really overly staffed. I mean, lose, you know, Tony Mobilio, our custodian for two months because of. I think he's been around long enough, he probably has. A full allotment of vacation and rollover time, so that would be a lot. So if we're gonna do it, I think what we. What we probably should look at is kind of buyback rather than use it later. So I would suggest if we're gonna pursue anything like this, we should pursue a. We're willing to give, and this all comes down to, you know, legal review. For any vacation, you can't roll over under the existing personnel rules or contracts, you can buy back one more week. A one-use vacation and we just cut you a check at the end of the fiscal year. We'll pass town meeting by then, so we'll be able to put it into a warrant to approve it. We would even have time to initiate and get people to say you have to make a choice by June first. So that specific number can be allotted for in a warrant on town meeting floor two weeks later. So we can actually work with the finance committee, figure out the costs and then from there potentially. Propose a buyback rather than use it later. Um so that's just another option. Um we'll give one more round to the board. Greg, I, if you wanna just add on to some of the discussion.
I suppose if if we did the buyback. We could if we if if you said if we set a deadline to do it for the ATM, we could pull it out of free cash and just pay it and then we wouldn't have to worry about funding it. So I I'd be alright with that.
To some degree, I think yeah, that's what it would help us with and it wouldn't be a an unknown overtime issue later in FY twenty two.
Right, or or the manpower shortage, so.
Do you have something you wanna add to that, Dylan?
Uh I think what you two just said, that sounds good to me, I'd like to uh keep looking at this going.
So if the board agrees, um we'll just ask Heather to work with the finance team and personnel. Our our legal consultant and uh get some feedback on these these options. I would, I would prefer focusing on the buyback option. But I would like them to review the other options, so at least we have a a full picture to look at. And hopefully uh by next meeting, they can kinda present to us their. Whether it's their recommendation or just this is what legal says we can do and this is the financial impact. I'm hoping that the finance committee actually has a chance to look at it and provide a recommendation based on a potential financial impact. Cuz um I wouldn't really wanna take action without getting some input from the finance committee based on how this could affect us.
I also, I wanna note for you that. Even if we did determine that that giving somebody an either or option is is doable. If it's not something we're gonna offer to the police because of the situation puts the chief in, then I would think whatever we offer. The police, we offer across the board to all time employees, so I don't wanna set different policies for DPW or police or anyone else, whatever policy we set. If it's gonna be a a an option or a choice or one way or the other, I'd like to do it across the board, so everyone's given the exact same. Treatment municipal employee wise, which I I think some of our contracts probably say we have to do that anyway, so. Um if if we're going to focus on. The buyback is the fits best for the police force and I understand what John's saying, I think it does. Then um I think that should be our our first priority if that is acceptable on the financing to the. Labor board, um we gotta focus on just that one offer to everybody. Rather than try to say, you know, someone could buy back and someone else can't.
I agree with that. So Heather, did you get those notes and can work with the various department heads, finance team, legal, et cetera, and come back with us at the next meeting with uh. Answers to some of these questions?
Yep, absolutely.
Thank you. Do you have anything else you wanted to discuss, Chief?
Uh no, I. I do have the question as to what you think is going to be our pattern for returning to normal. Any idea where we're going? You know, the governor really hasn't said, just because we're in such a different schedule like. If if and when you do come up with some idea, please give me a a heads up because we're in the twelve-hour days right now. Uh so it's a big change over for us, we can, we can stay there, the guys are doing great. But at some point, it's a it's a major shift back um for us, which I I'd be looking forward to make as soon as we can. And the other thing I'll say is we randomly, we have been. Monitoring all of the officers, including myself, and we are really doing well in terms of helping them.
Okay, that's good to hear. My thoughts and we'll go around the board, give everybody a chance. Starting with from the CDC down, I think what they've been suggesting is they wanna see kinda fourteen days of reduced numbers. Or uh like a steady decline. I know that's. I've looked at the numbers and I know Greg brought it up before at the last meeting, it's. We're not doing enough testing to really know what's going on and I don't know if that's making it look worse or look better. But it it's not very accurate and it's frustrating to me. Um because I've gotta sit here and work with the other board members and we've gotta come up with plans to figure out what we think is best for the town. And we really don't have a lot of data to support anything. That. You know, I, yeah, I can read a statistic, but when I look at where the data comes from. I see the holes in all statistics, I'm a very big skeptic of statistics because I don't trust it till I know the source of the data that it's based on. And right now, the tests themselves are considered seventy-five percent accurate or around there, I hear, maybe eighty percent. So you can get a lot of false negatives. When it comes to what would be considered as an acceptable standard. Seventy or eighty percent wouldn't be considered acceptable scientifically, but in the current situation. We kinda rush it in there, we're doing our best with the resources and scientific knowledge we have today. But to me, that makes it hard to kinda answer your question, I guess, Chief, is what I'm trying to get at is, we're basing it on. Kind of an incomplete data set. And because of that, we're also, I feel like I'm just reacting to whatever the state and the federal government choose any other day. And half the time, it seems like the numbers are getting better, but they come out asking for more restrictions because. I don't know, I remember the mayor of Boston the other day was upset because more people were kind of gathering in places he didn't want. Even though the numbers were getting better a couple of days. And I, and I'm not saying the message was wrong. But I, I'm looking at human nature. And people won't just take directives for too long without something to support it and we gotta pay attention to that. And from my perspective, that's the balance of using the data and then. Trying to look around the world and say, well, what's really going on versus. There's two sides of this conversation and it's. I hear the frustration from both sides, so I got nothing more to say, I'll I'll give it to Greg right now to see how he wants to. Answer uh town operations and what our potential back to normal would be.
Making it very brief, I think that we need to, you know, until the governor backs off of the state, there's not a lot we can do to back off here. Um I did see numbers this morning from Los Angeles specifically and I'm just gonna give this one stat. Um they weren't saying they had ten thousand cases and two hundred deaths, which appears to be a two percent death rate. Um as of today, this morning, I heard in Channel Five News that they're finding now that they're testing more people in the population. That there's fifty-five times the infection rate that they previously thought, so now they're saying their infection. Numbers of five hundred and fifty thousand, not ten thousand, which also makes the death rate around decimal zero three six percent. So three out of a thousand that are infected are dying, not one out of fifty. Um and that's what I've suspected right along, there's there's so many more. I thought like ten to twenty times more that are infected, but what they're finding is there's so many people that just. Aren't showing symptoms or signs, this is highly infectious and it's spread through a lot of people. And the extreme end isn't isn't as large a percentage as we think, but. Because of the sheer numbers of people that are infected, that's why we have so many that have become hospitalized and become sick. And the problem is those, there's so many of them that they've overrun some of the other places that weren't ready for. I do think the numbers, um we're seeing a lot of. New infections dated, but that's because they're testing more people. I don't think our hospitalization rate is changing, I think some more people are being added and maybe Chief Rogowski could comment on this if he's seen anything. I I'd be curious to see. What the kind of new admission rate is to the hospitals, that's the rate I'd like to see if that new admissions going down. That might give us a better hint, but it it sounds to me like the state's planning to stay where we are, you know, for another month.
Dylan, do you have something you wanna add to the conversation?
Yeah, I'll just tack on to that, that um Governor Baker today, I'm sure you all saw, uh he's uh canceling the rest of the school year. Um and I think that just uh goes to show how uh. Things might not be going back to normal very soon, but I think following the state's lead makes a lot of sense on that.
So I guess simply said, uh Chief, um. Based on our feelings of the state's position, it it doesn't look like. We're really gonna have much to offer you in the next couple of weeks and how we're changing operations. But if things go well in the next two weeks, we can at least tell you that we think in the following two weeks after that, we might be looking at a. A better horizon. So it's kinda like. We're in a old pattern and I wish I could say better news right now.
Hey, hey Matt, it's the fire chief.
Yes, Chief.
Can you hear me?
We can hear you.
Oh, I I sorry, I tried to chime in earlier about the uh vacation uh topic that was brought up. But I couldn't figure out how to unmute my phone, but I gotta figure it out now. I I I was talking with Heather earlier. And uh I'm going to check with Mima tomorrow, I'm gonna pose the question about. If the town has to buy back vacation time, if that would be a COVID nineteen related uh reimbursable expense. Yeah, I I don't, I didn't know the answer, uh so I'm going to check tomorrow to see if that is something. That can be reimbursable since public safety, I I think we can relate it to public safety, I know the. The police are in a position where they can have people on vacation, the fire department, same position, DPW, same position, so. I will get an answer to Heather as soon as I know and I I'm sure she'll relay that to you.
I appreciate it and uh one quick follow-up, Chief. Greg was wondering if it it's possible, do you have any updated numbers regarding, I think Greg was asking like. People that actually made it to the hospital?
Um right now, it's very difficult because if you are a healthy adult with no pre-existing medical conditions. Um if you have any COVID nineteen related symptoms and you call your doctor, they're telling you to stay home and ride it out. So uh we've transported a few people in the ambulance who were home for ten or eleven, I think one person was home for twelve days. And uh you know, they started getting some difficulty breathing, but most people that are healthy. Are being really affected severely by COVID nineteen from what I've seen. It's mostly people with, you know, the elderly and anybody with asthma or some sort of pre-existing condition, so. I think there's a lot of people that have had it, that do currently have it, but they're not getting tested because there's just not a number of tests to go around, so. Um I think the number, once they come up with the test, that can tell you the antibody test whether you've had it. I think that number is gonna go up substantially because I I have a feeling that, you know, a lot of people have had it. And when they call their doctors and the doctors are telling them, just stay home and ride it out and, you know, for a majority of people. They're gonna be fine after having it, so I I I don't have an exact number to give you. And we have transported quite a number of positive patients, I just got a uh phone call today. From the emergency department at Haywood that somebody we took the other day was positive. And you know, we've transported some suspected positives, but I I I don't have exact numbers for you. I'm not sure anybody really knows at this time.
Do you have a sense, Bob, from, I know the medics, I listen to them somewhere down the calls. Do they have a sense of of the hospitalization rate? In other words, are are they getting as many new cases into the hospital? Um as they were before, is that rising or falling or you not have any sense of that?
Um I don't, I don't think so, right now, um majority of the people that were going to the hospital for. What I wanna say is non-emergent, you know, wor- life-threatening calls, uh they're not going to the hospital because. Doctors and physicians and visiting nurses and CNAs and all the people that we see in our healthcare system are advising. Not to go to the hospital because that's kind of a hotspot, cuz that's, you know, people that have it are getting transported, so. They're trying to keep as many people out of the hospital as possible, you know, except for true emergencies. So I don't think the um the emergency rooms are not as busy as they were, I know the ICUs are busier. And the uh floors are busier, but they're a little bit smaller sections of the hospitals. Um I know they opened the DCU center up for recovering COVID nineteen patients. And uh what I heard today, you know, it's not, it's not at capacity, it uh it doesn't, I don't know if that number's changed, but. Um I, it's it's tough to say, cuz a lot of the patients we transport, once we get them to the hospital, we never really hear the outcome. Except if they do test positive, the hospital's calling us to let us know that, just so our FYI that our people were exposed. All of our people are wearing full PVE on every medical call, so. Even if they're coming in contact with a positive patient, it's it's not really considered an exposure because uh they're properly bound up and masked and all that precautions.
I appreciate it, Chief.
No problem.
Keep riding the waves.
Yeah, I'm um every, every week, every Thursday, I have a conference call with Mima and they've been advising of the updates. Um through the CDC statewide and nationally, there hasn't really been much change in the last few weeks, so hopefully. Based kinda what I've been seeing on the news, it looks like we we may hit the peak, I hope that's true and we're on the downward side, but I guess time will tell.
Gotcha.
Okay, now I know how to chime in, so if I have anything else. Okay, now I know how to chime in, so if I have anything else that I can chime in.
Appreciate it much.
Alright.
Matt?
Yes, Heather.
Can I just answer Greg's question a little bit there? Um, so Greg, you were talking about the hospital rates and so forth. On the state's website, they've actually done a nice job with adding a um new platform started yesterday. Uh, this is a twenty-five page document that they're updating on a daily basis with all the different details and stats. So patients reported as hospitalized is one of the charts, and you'll see here new hospitalization count. Um, so over here for April twentieth, they had eighty-three new hospitalizations, and as of today in the state of Massachusetts, there's. Three thousand eight hundred and seventy-two hospitalized for COVID nineteen. They also have a chart down here. Let me find it, that actually tells you by hospital, so before I do that, um, the other thing Rob mentioned was the hospital capacity. So you can see here that they also talk about the total hospital cata- capacity by the region. Um, I don't think you can see, I don't know if you can see the central mass side to the right here, talks about the occupied and unoccupied and available beds. But right now there's over fifty percent um that is available and unused. And then down here, you get to COVID patient census by hospital, so it's alphabetical, Haywood is down here. Um, and you'll see that there's currently thirteen hospitalized total COVID patients suspected and confirmed. And two um that are in the ICU suspected and confirmed. So I don't know if that answers any of your questions, Greg, but that's the information where I can locate it for you.
Yeah, I liked that other, that chart you had that was showing the, the rates, cause it looks like it, they had a hundred and thirty-one one day, then eighty-nine, then it dropped off, it's kinda back at eighty. And what, you know, the, the thing is, it's hard to tell from that unless you see the ICUs like you did. In the last page, when they say these, the, the new rates they have, the, the new admissions, um. What's that, the bottom, the April, so eighty-eight on the eighteenth and ninety-two and the nineteenth. But we don't know how many of those new admissions are, you know, real critical or just. You know, someone has some symptoms, I would assume they gotta be pretty serious symptoms if they're admitting them, though. I don't know, my impression was the DCU center is um really not close to capacity. Which, which is good, I mean, we don't wanna see everything at capacity. I'm curious, I, I, I think if we track those numbers to see the new, the new admissions daily, that should give us an idea of when we're trending. You see what I'm saying?
And that's, that's correct, Greg, uh the people that are admitted are uh pretty sick. The majority of the people, if they're testing positive and they're not showing any severe signs or symptoms, they're, they're being sent home. To uh self-quarantine and monitor themselves, so we have, we have a number of patients in town. Who are positive, who are currently at their residence now, that, you know, they're just monitoring themselves and. Should anything severe come up, they've been advised, they'll call the ambulance, but I think a majority of the patients that you're seeing on that chart. Are um exhibiting ex- uh severe signs and symptoms.
So I, I think if we wanna get an idea of when this is taking a turn for us. It's hard to go by the number of cases because they say testing more, they're finding tons more. But if we go by the number of hos- new or hospital admissions, that's gonna give us an idea of when the trend is falling off, when, when we're getting less people. That are severe being admitted, that should be a good sign that we're, we're on that recovery path, and that's gonna probably, when that goes down and stays down. Um, you would expect for two weeks, then the governor's gonna start to release things. So that's the best answer we could give you, uh John, for, for timing. Is when, when that admission number starts to go down and stay down for a two-week period, I think that's when they're talking about. Opening things up to the first phase, which I think they're saying would be like restaurants and bars opening again. So. Heather, can you uh share the link to all of this, cause I'm sure it'll be updated regularly at that government link that you just.
Sure, it's the COVID nineteen um. Address for the state. Uh, that's where they're uh currently providing most of the information, and that, that new um platform just came out actually yesterday. They released it later in the day at like seven instead of their usual four. Um, I've been one of those people who's checking the numbers every single day at four o'clock to check out the trends. I'm trying to pull up another thing in the background, I'll work on it for a few minutes. Um, there is a uh another company um that has actually combined uh one of the leading. Uh projectors on this, which is IHME. Uh, there's another company, Definitive Healthcare, they just came up with a new model, they were working with HHS, and they actually added in ventilator capacity. To start projecting, but they also did it by county in Massachusetts. To show peak dates and trends, so I'll see if I can pull that up in the background while everyone is continuing talking, see if I can come back to it, but yes. So the first um address is simply the state's website, so I'll pull it up again here, so it's the mass.gov. And then it's the COVID nineteen dashboard, generally if you just Google COVID nineteen in Massachusetts, you're gonna pull up the main state's website. Um, I'll see if it, I don't know if it'll let me share a different page here, let's see. New share, oh, maybe it's loading, yep, it is, okay. So this is, this is it right here, I actually have it bookmarked, cause I use it too much. Mass.gov slash info, details, COVID nineteen updates and info. Again, if you just go to Google Mass COVID nineteen, and then they have all the information here, the two major pieces I look at down here, latest news, it always tells you the next time the. Governor's gonna do his news um press conference, he usually puts this, updates this around like nine-thirty in the morning, today they were extremely late and didn't update this until it happened. And then COVID nineteen cases, they give you update on the left, and this is the view, the latest COVID nineteen dashboard right here. Um, they also started posting all of the um. I don't know if I'll throw it up in this, they also started posting all of the. Municipalities and the Commonwealth and their current case counts if they exceeded the number of five. And they've been updating that, uh they did that last week, they didn't give many communities notice on it, and then they are going to keep it updated on Wednesdays at three PM, I believe.
That's good, um, gonna be a lot of good information there. You can see on the left side forty-one thousand confirmed, hundred and seventy-five thousand tested. That's, you know, trending over, just over one in four. Um, twenty-five percent to thirty percent, I think, in the population, they're finding out have it, of the ones they test. So gives you a good idea, numbers-wise, somebody will actually have this in the state if it's, you know, twenty-five to thirty percent of the people. There's been a whole lot of people that have it, so now, if you look at that huge number that have it, I think the hospitalizations aren't. That surprising, um. You know, to have the number of hospitalizations we do with the number of cases they had confirmed before. Without testing a lot of people, it's, it seemed very scary, there's so many people getting so sick and a large percentage. Um, but at least it does look like the percentage um of extreme sick is, is much lower. Uh ratio to the number of people that have actually had it. Um, but still, until those numbers start to decrease steadily, they're not gonna release anything for us and back off of this. Gonna have to wait it out and see. What do we, we have uh, I don't know if we have more to say on this right now, it seems like it's, we've reached our. Point of all the new information available. Um. I guess we can uh move on to. Just double-check something. I didn't specifically call it out, but on the agenda, there was a state and federal COVID regulations, is there anything new to bring to our attention, Heather? That you're aware of?
As, as far as new things go, uh the state does a weekly CEO call on Wednesdays that I participate in. That includes the Lieutenant Governor and the um Division of Local Services, and sometimes there's a few other folks from Mima. Today their main focus, they were just reiterating that they don't currently have an update on extension of um essential services. Beyond the May fourth date, but they're gonna follow the data, and they're likely to provide an update on that by the end of the week. Um, as to if and when and what extensions and how it would look. Um, they were pressed quite a bit by municipal. Representatives of how things were gonna happen with the budget, they still don't have any answers. Um, you know, they're kind of in some ways in a similar situation as municipalities are, cause all the funds are trending down from the federal government. Uh, they spent a little time talking about the CARES Act, which is the federal act that got passed uh a few weeks ago, that there's a little bit of discussion about. Uh, how that is going to essentially affect municipalities, we don't entirely know, there's certain provisions of it that include more funds for CBBG funding and some other programs. But the specific funding that's just over two point seven billion dollars, that's going to be the share that's gonna go to Massachusetts and its municipalities. It's not clear how it's, what the rules really are, they only have currently three specifications to it, one is that it has to be used for. COVID nineteen related expenditures um that were incurred directly because of COVID nineteen. The second is that it has to be um unexpected, unplanned expenditures. Uh, as of March twenty-third, and the third is that the expenditure has to be incurred between March first and December thirty-first. Um, there's no current answers as to any other guidance on that, there's a lot of questions about whether or not that can include. Um, supplementing the seventy-five, twenty-five percent split for Mima reimbursements. Whether that would allow us to cover the town's portion for that. Um, there's no current information other than, as of right now, it specifically is not allowed to cover um missed or lost revenues. But there's some discussion that the US House might still pick that conversation up and continue with it. So we're working with that internally to figure out what we're doing. Um, to keep track of, cause now we have three potential different sources of funding for COVID nineteen. We have DPH funding that we've gotten already, we have Mima funding, funding that we have to apply for, and there's potentially, with still very few parameters in place. Um, the CARES Act, so we did discuss that uh finance team today, which myself, Jean, Sharon and Claire from Finance Committee. So we had conversations about that, we'll keep going back and forth on that. And then as far as Finance Committee goes, they are having meetings scheduled to start discussing some of these pieces, ramifications, looking at numbers and. Hopefully make some recommendations after their meeting, um which is gonna be this Thursday. So my only follow-up recommendation on that is, it may be of interest to the select board to potentially have a meeting next week. To come back and discuss with either the Finance Committee as a whole, or with their representatives, their recommendations moving forward based on the information we currently know. Which changes daily, but right now is not very much with the finances.
Okay. So, I guess, uh. Are we at a point of dealing with FY twenty revenue predictions, or is this something we still gotta figure out?
Um, I think it's something that Claire might have it, something she might wanna add on this, but as of right now, it's one of the agenda items for um the Finance Committee on Thursday. We've been working with it with Finance Team for the past couple of weeks, trying to figure out where we're currently at for collections for FY twenty. What we have left to come in for FY twenty, and starting to look at some conservative predictions about what we can potentially expect coming in. One of the unknowns for our FY twenty budget is the state revenues. Um, right now, we are at a number less than a hundred percent of what they fund us every year and what they've um planned to fund us for FY twenty. State has not given us any guidance at this point of whether or not we can expect a hundred percent of those revenues to come in. Or whether there's a potential of a nine-C or mid-year cut to some of their funding to the towns. Uh, there was an economic roundtable last week in which, if I'm stating the number correctly, I believe the economists were predicting a fourteen point one percent. Um, shortfall of revenues anticipated for FY twenty-one on the state level. I don't know how much or if uh at all that's gonna impact FY twenty revenues coming from the state. We also don't currently know if the state's gonna utilize any of their stabilization funds to make municipalities whole. So there's lots of complete unknowns for the FY twenty and FY twenty-one revenues.
Gotcha.
But like I said, I don't know, Claire might have something to add on that.
You have anything to add, Claire?
Money from somewhere.
We can hear you now.
Okay, we may need money to come up, come up with money, cause we're gonna be shortfall. I was gonna, thinking of talking to the Finance Committee on Thursday if we can freeze the budgets for this year. So we can at least get through two thousand twenty.
Okay, are you?
Not be too bad off.
What is our best understanding of our current shortfall, or should I say overages in our budget? Do you know yet?
Uh, I looked over uh Sharon's last. Not Sharon, Jean's last. And they looked pretty good. There weren't too many. You know, they were like, a lot of them seventy-five, eighty, so if they could just kinda freeze their expenses what they can. It might get us through this year.
Matt, I think the problem's gonna be more so what we're not gonna pull in on revenues, rather than being necessarily over on what people plan to expend. Um, I think as Claire said, you know, everyone's doing okay, and they're right in the market of where they should be this time of year for their expenditures, if this was a normal year. But because we're looking at the potential of unknowns of funds coming into the state. And potentially not collecting a hundred percent of where we normally would typically be in at the end of the year for local receipts. That this could be a bit of a problem.
So that's also, so if I'm hearing this correct or interpreting it properly, um. It's the actual cash received, not what's due us, that you're talking about, it's the cash flow really that's gonna be affected.
Um, yeah, I, I mean, the cash flows. They're, they're a little bit different, so cash flow is more so having enough money in the bank to pay the bills. And we're, we're still okay on that, but the concern is just that. If you say hypothetically, at this point that we have budgeted to spend a hundred thousand dollars. But we're only anticipating right now collecting ninety thousand dollars, we may still only spend a hundred thousand dollars. But that could be ten thousand more than what we're actually gonna take in, that may.
Is that because you're afraid the state's gonna take their money back? Because we don't have a lot of variable local revenues we rely on.
So our local revenues that we currently have, based on our analysis this past week, and it's only our first run, so we, we gotta do it a couple more times, and. You know, Jean's been really good at going back and triple-checking what we anticipated and what we currently pulled in. But our numbers are relatively low for what we anticipated pulling in. And a lot of our revenues, even on like local receipt side, a lot of this stuff is seasonal, right? So a lot of the border selectmen's permit stuff, you expect already to be in by now, cause renewals for the majority of what we do, licenses card, there's all that. Yeah, is all done by December thirty-first of the prior calendar year. So that number's really not gonna change, that number's actually fine, but just as an example, some things we know are seasonal. And we know when to anticipate them and when we don't, when, when we don't think they're gonna come in all the way. Um, an example of something that's pretty low is building permits. Um, right now, I think when we looked at it last week, Claire might remember, but I don't even think we were at fifty percent. Um, which is slightly problematic, because this is the season we normally pull in building permits. Right, the spring season when everyone goes out and says, okay, let's add that garage, let's add that shed, let's redo that deck and so forth. And it's not to say that we're not gonna have some of those happen, but I think the more and more that we see stress on the economy, the less we're gonna see a number of those permits be pulled. And it's not so much the tiny pieces here and there, I mean, that right now, I think it's about twenty thousand shy of what we anticipated. But it's the overall effect, so when you have all these different accounts that come in ten and twenty K shy, because of things not being pulled and not moving forward. You have a little bit of a shortfall involved. Like I said, we're only in the beginning of the analysis, we need to keep going with it and see where things fall out. And we'll know a little bit more, um, right now Jean's also helping us run numbers, so we're at fifty percent, it's thirty-five percent of the year. So we can figure out the differences as to where it is and some actual numbers that have come in since then as well, to keep it up to date. So, once the Finance Committee meets on Thursday and is able to review everything we can put together for them, I'm sure they'll have. More of a uh thorough analysis for the border selectmen and recommendation.
Okay.
Now, Matt, we know that the veterans, that expense account's gonna go up.
I understood, we got more veterans in the.
Year, yeah. And then we don't know how much water. And then we don't know how much lottery money will get back from the state this year either. That's another thing that may go down. On the revenue side. So the more we could keep our expenses down. And hold it, we might be okay.
I think a better way to phrase this question is. What percentage of our revenues for FY twenty have we not collected at this point? So how far are we from our collection goal? And that way gives us an idea of how much is still out there, then we can kinda make a guess. As how much of that we're gonna go ahead and collect. So I'd like to have a number idea of the shortfall.
Jean was gonna try to come up with those numbers, right Heather?
I know Heather did mention, yes. Go ahead Heather.
Yeah, so Jean was working on some of those numbers as well. So we, we will have more of an answer come Thursday for Finance Committee. Um, the Finance Team will meeting, we've been meeting every Thursday, sometimes twice a week. Just to stay on top of the updates from the state and the numbers and what we know or don't know or um. What have you. So we, we should have some more specific numbers Greg, when everyone meets hopefully next week. To present to the border selectmen for review, um, along with the Finance Committee's recommendations, whatever they may be.
Alright, we gotta, anything else either of you wanna discuss on the, okay. Um, move on to the next. Agenda item, just wanna make sure I didn't run past something previously, um. Looks like we have a wage authorization for new employee at DPW Jacob Pachowski. PW one minimum new hire. We have a motion. Better if I open my mic, I'll make a motion, we uh approve Jake Pachowski for a PW one minimum new hire uh wage.
I will second that motion, please.
Uh, any further discussion? Call for a vote. Sullivan, yes.
Clark, yes.
Urban, yes. Alright, now we're gonna get into some more finance items, um. The first item is actually comes from me, it was a. Part of our um. Discussion a few meetings ago was to review the capital budget. And look at some of the uh, the, the fact that our free cash came in almost twice as much as what we budgeted, so instead of. I forget the number, two hundred thousand, it was four hundred thousand or three hundred thousand, instead it was six hundred thousand. Um. To see what we thought might be putting money either into the existing capital budget. Or if there was an item that we thought would be worth investing that we, we didn't see on the plan or not. Um, what I had asked to have on the agenda so we could talk is, um. A request, assuming that the free cash is there, not only. Well, the free cash is there in excess of what we think we might wanna use for a COVID to cover this fiscal year. But also to cover the original capital budget. And what we had planned on putting in stabilization out of free cash, et cetera. So beyond what was originally planned on the free cash and where that plan was gonna put that money. Um. I was asking for us to consider a potential of a hundred thousand dollars to the town to help us continue to. Complete the uh cable distribution through town. I think um. Our current situation explains the benefit for people to have a high-speed internet and. Uh, a little bit more reliability than dish, especially on a day like tonight and the weather we have. It's, many people have issues with that. And we've been talking about this for about a, almost two years now. And Andrew had started working with Spectrum. And started working out some numbers and getting some plans together, identifying what areas of town are covered, what aren't. Um, recognizing that we're not a densely populated town. A lot of the roads that. Aren't covered, don't have enough people under the current charter contract to kind of push charter to extend it there. Based on their own customer base potential for future revenues. So they're not necessarily likely to rest themselves. I'm sorry Greg, go ahead.
Can I interrupt you for a second? Heather, can you disconnect Liam from the live chat, please?
Already did.
Thank you. Sorry Matt, go ahead. Inappropriate language and discussion in the live chat.
There's, there's a security feature, um, so one thing I didn't do today and I did last time this meeting is you can lock the meeting. Which takes a moment, but um, if you do, when people come in, it provides, prevents people who um, they call them zoom bombers. Uh, random people from jumping in on the meeting.
That guy was certainly inappropriate, so we don't need that on here.
Yes, well, it's, I'm guessing it's someone who fits that uh category of zoom.
I'd assume so. I just wanted to get it off us. I don't mean to interrupt you Matt, I just want that gone as soon as we could, that's all.
No, understood, thank you. Um.
Continue, sorry.
Yes, and if it happened to be someone that was listening and legitimate, email the board with something uh respectfully. And. We'll follow up on it. Um. So just to get back to my point. The town would benefit if we extend cable to. Various roads where people are not served. Or potentially, look at a plan where we can develop a. Kind of a, a lending situation where. Someone might be five hundred feet from the road because they got a long driveway. And despite cable being on the road, they can't get internet to their house from cable because it's a five hundred foot connection fee. That isn't standard with uh most services where if you're. Twenty feet, fifty feet from the road, they'll, they'll run the line to your house to get you as a customer. Um. So. This is more of a big picture thing, not to say we've identified exactly. Where all of this money should go and exactly the scope of the work. But I was making a recommendation to put money into this to help us extend our, expand our distribution in town. Part of it would be running lines and possibly new poles to roads that are underserved or not served at all. And part of that money could potentially be set up. Similarly, where historically we'd use CDBG to help some people with mortgages and after so many years, it didn't happen, so. Uh, I think Greg, you recall, we've written off old loans that went so many years. We could develop a plan where if somebody had to pay three thousand dollars to get cable to their house. This money would be used to almost be the loan person for the town and then they get a. Assessment either to add to their taxes or something where. Over three or four years, they can pay that off if they're not able to pay something off like that in a timely fashion directly with the, the cable company. I just think it would, it's a benefit that a lot of people in town. I'm not saying by percentage or majority, I'm not saying that at all. I just think there's enough people where this would help the town out. And when we look at the long-term master plan that we're, we've been contemplating. We should look at areas where we could see potential development, even potentially denser development and make sure. This is there and ready to be connected to when the time comes. So that's why I raised it up as an agenda item to see what the board wanted to think about. Maybe we could talk a little now and then follow up again in a week or two, um, to expand on that discussion. You got something to say Greg? I'd start with you, uh, any counters or added comments you might have to that?
Certainly. Um, I'll try to address those things in order. First of all, as far as the free cash goes. Um, I would have no problem setting aside some free cash from this year because we, we should have, as you said, a large volume. It's around six hundred and fifty thousand this year. Um, any shortfalls that we do have in, in our revenues coming in. I anticipate, for the most part, those, those will come back to us. Um, like we're missing on building permits, people start probably pick them up later on this summer. You know, if someone has something they wanna get done this year, they just won't start in the spring, they'll still start later. Um, tax revenues, uh, property tax or excise tax revenues, they may come in late, but I think they're gonna come in sooner or later. So we may see another bolstering in free cash next year because of the shortfalls. And in this fourth quarter, uh, uh, will get picked up sometime next year. It'll be realized as free cash next year. Cause we don't wanna budget for those next year, we just wanna budget normally and that will. So our free cash we used, I think we'll get it back again next year, whatever we used to balance that. I won't say balance a bunch to put to pay our deficit at the end of the year, so. I'm not overly worried about deficits, I'm hoping we'll stay, you know, under two hundred thousand on deficit. There was still a bit of some of four hundred thousand in free cash, and I think we've talked about. Um, the problem with internet, and quite frankly, it's embarrassing that this town doesn't have internet, everybody. It's an embarrassment. And we've talked about this enough and we've looked at avenues. There is no inexpensive answer. And there's no answer that, you know, certainly the people could pick up on their own and they shouldn't have to. Most of this town has internet service and has it available, and I think that everybody should have it available. As far as, um, on private property, that should be their responsibility in private property. But certainly if we can legally set up a method for them, uh, for the town to pick that up and add it to a bill for them. That goes with their taxes or somehow paid over a period of even five years or more. I'd be comfortable with that too, as long as we can set it up properly, and I, I would think we can. So it's, it's yes across the board for me.
Yeah, I would like to agree, um, you know, increasing access to quality internet for as many people as possible. Uh, is a really noble pursuit, especially with so many folks staying at home, quarantining, people need to work from home. We should all have good internet, so I think this is a topic we should stay on top of, especially if we have. Uh, financial uh comments uh from Claire or from Heather. It's definitely uh worth a discussion for another night as well. I'm, I'm in favor of this.
You got something you'd like to add, Claire?
Yeah, this is a good idea and everything, but I don't think it's something. That we should be really talking about now. I would say it would be something good to bring up for next year and plan and. But at this time this year, I really think we've, we've got to be able to balance our budgets and run the town before setting. Money aside. It's good if we do need it.
I got you. I wanted to wait till you had the chance to actually review the numbers of the, the free cash versus the actual budgeted revenues.
Yeah.
As well as the shortfalls.
Because right now, we're looking at, if I recall, almost three hundred and fifty thousand dollars of free cash we didn't plan on. So that's above and beyond the three hundred thousand we did plan on. Um, and because of that, one. I'm not very positive of the fact that we're gonna run into another three hundred thousand. Next year that we didn't plan on. It'd be great if we at least could get a hundred thousand, which was kind of. I think what Andrew thought might be the case, but we just came in much higher than, you know, but. It's tough for me to talk about pushing it off another year again. This is, this would be the third year in a row I've been trying to make some headway. To get a high-speed internet to everybody in town. Because we do have people in areas and even neighborhoods that potentially could increase their development. Some people keep saying we need, you know, either more modern or just more residential homes in town. So to get more people, to increase the revenue in that manner, um. I'm not saying, you know, build a hundred homes all of a sudden, but. Where they're gonna build is also gonna be limited a little bit on what infrastructure is there. And if you can say that there's an area of town now that can be built out. Because we have cable to it that we didn't have before, it might make that a, a better place for a developer to build than. A place in Rutland or a place in Hubbard Stenner. And so I do believe that the, each time we keep pushing it out, it just costs more to do.
Well, what I'm, I'm saying Matt is we need to see, like in the next month, where we are. Because hopefully this COVID will be gone. But we're not sure, nobody is sure. Now I heard today, the federal government. Was going to look for more loans after this one that they've. Just approved and supposed to approve tomorrow. And in that, they mentioned bringing internet to the rural areas. Of the US. Now we, we're a rural area.
Yeah.
So maybe there may be some federal aid coming too. You know, you can talk about it, but I wouldn't put anything on the warrant right now. Until we see where our ends are coming from.
I don't think we're talking. We're not trying to put it on the warrant like right now, but I think what Matt's saying, and I agree with this, we, we wanna see. Where the shortfalls are in our revenues as we talked about and see where Finance thinks we're gonna wind up this year. But we are both, I think, expecting that we'll be within, it sounds crazy, but with, if we're within two hundred thousand dollars. Of where we need to be, we have that in free cash and then some. And this is something we have, even when Charlie was still here, we've talked about this extensively. And we've looked into this in, in many different ways. We, we need to take some action. And I agree that uh, something's gonna have to hit the warrant, my, my intention, we were gonna hit the warrant with something. But we need to figure out what that's gonna be, um, and with your help, of course Claire. We need to know what we can do, but we have to put something down. Right now, they just shut schools down for the rest of the year. We have a whole host of children in this town that can't even access their classroom online because they haven't internet.
Yeah, I know all that.
It's not like they go to the library and get internet, they, they can't go to the library. So they just can't get their education. We're really failing some of these people and it's becoming very evident right now and, and that's why.
If you can't meet your budget line, when we see about the revenues of where they're coming in and get those numbers. You can't make your budget line to run your town. Internet isn't gonna do anybody any good.
Agree, but I, I, I think.
And that's what I'm saying. You gotta talk about it and everything, but it's gotta be like. In space until you know where we're coming in.
We have a month and a half. At least, we have at least a month anyways before we need to put something in warrants. We have. If, if in the next month, we don't have a good idea where our numbers are, we're in trouble, cause we, we gotta be. Have a good idea.
We'll know where they are, they might not be where we want them to be, but.
And, and, and then we might adjust, uh, at least our number, put something down. I want something on there, but we, we can reduce the number if we need to. But I, I, I think I'm pretty confident with the free cash we have coming in, we should be safe. And it's important that we predict next year's budget and stay within it with the revenues.
Yeah.
I, I don't wanna count on, if we're a hundred thousand short in tax revenues and excise taxes and things. I don't wanna bank that in next year's budget and say we're gonna get it back. I wanna let that fall as free cash next year, if, if and when it comes in. Um, but we have enough this year that we can cover it and hopefully recover it later, but if we don't, it's not gonna hurt us, I don't think. I think, we don't know for sure yet.
No, we don't know.
And the other thing is.
I'm a numbers person and I like to see the numbers down there first.
So am I Claire, so am I.
Pull them out of the sky.
So am I.
And let's cross our fingers, we don't have to do it, but the one thing we also have that thankfully, right now, we don't have to talk about is. We have the stabilization fund. That's the sole intent of that is to deal with something that we might be facing right now. Is a major economic quote unquote disaster that, just like in two thousand eight. But we've got our stabilization fund up to or just over the recommendation from the state.
Yeah.
And then we've increased, if I'm correct Claire. Um, did we introduce or create a separate? No, we didn't. What we did is we started.
We were going to, but then we didn't.
Cash and just left it as free cash.
Yeah.
So part of that rollover is. So, part of that rollover is positive, but that's also something we gotta consider in what we're looking at right now. We got six fifty, how much of that was intentionally rolled over from the previous?
Yeah, because that's what Andrew said, it would roll into the free cash for the next year.
Yeah, I wanna say it was like a hundred and thirty-five thousand, I thought. I don't know why that number sticks in my head, I thought we put a big chunk over. Because primarily, if it goes into stabilization, we need a two-thirds vote to use it, if it's in free cash, we need a majority vote to use it, so it made the money. More easily usable at town meeting if we wanted to, and I understand why you want to do that, and it's a good idea. Um, but if, if you were insinuating, Matt, that we could dip into stabilization for the hundred thousand, I, I would be opposed to that.
No, I'm just saying that's our safety blanket.
Oh, yeah, oh, okay, yeah, so we have, yeah, okay, I got you.
Healthy account right now, all I meant.
All right, that, that's fine, yeah.
Um, now, I don't wanna blow this money saying, hey, look, we got that stabilization, I just think. Um, from the day I started in office to now, we're in a, I think, a, a much more confident financial position than we were. Um.
Yeah.
And. And we wanna keep that going. At least have this discussion about how would we spend some of this free cash that would help the town out in a bigger picture.
Yeah.
So, um, with that said, we'll kinda just take all the discussion tonight, digest it. Um, I'd like to revisit it as old business over the next couple meetings until it's time to finalize a warrant. And similar with Claire, uh, with your finance committee meeting, it would be something that I wouldn't mind if you don't mind starting the discussion with them about also.
I can bring that up.
I appreciate it. Um. The next two items on the finances, we had a Q R S D budget item and then a finance committee input, so. Which one do we start with? And I'm considering that these probably both came from either Heather or the finance committee? Or did Greg or Dylan have something they wanted to bring up? Greg did?
Yes.
Which, uh, particular item was it that?
Q R S D budget.
All right, you take the floor now.
Um, you know, I, I tried to read up as best I could, and I haven't gotten deep enough into it to be a hundred percent sure, but what do. It struck me as, as offensive, and I don't know if it should have, the, the, the request for nearly an eight percent, a seven point nine percent increase in budget. Given our financial concerns that we're talking about, not knowing what's gonna happen this year in revenues, and what's gonna shake down next year from the state and the revenues. It seems irresponsible in the least for the school to ask for eight percent increase in budget. Um, if we expect our typical two and a half percent increase in our revenues. Um, that I think comes out to be three hundred thousand dollars for us. And the states, and the schools are gonna put eight hundred plus thousand increase in their funding. Which means we have to reduce funding to the rest of the town by five hundred thousand dollars. I mean, that's, that's huge, and that's gonna be, you know, something in the neighborhood, I would think. I'm gonna throw a percentage out there and guess, but a five or six percent reduction for every town department, if the school gets that kinda money. And what I don't like about the timing of their request is as I'm reading the laws. Generally, I think we understand if, if we don't pass a school budget by June thirtieth. They're allowed to operate off of one twelfth of last year's budget per month. But I believe the new COVID laws allow for them to operate off their school committee-approved budget. So if we don't have a meeting and pass it on time, they could actually turn around and go after. Their proposed budget by the school committee, we have to start paying it. I believe it would still be reverted back if we approved something different later, but just the fact that they could push that high number on us now is. Um, you know, it brought me the wrong way, and they've gotta have funds, their, their excess and deficiency should be pretty good this year. They didn't run the school for most of March, April, May, or June, that's, you know, four months out of a eight, ten-month school year. They've gotta have their operating costs have to be, you know, giving them some good excess and deficiency funds coming to them this year as well. There's no way they were planning for that, but they have to know what's coming now, and they had to know what's coming when they made the budget. Um, maybe they didn't, maybe they're gonna revise their requests. But I would certainly think they would have a good idea of their operate, operating versus this expenses for the school, you know. There's certain expenses for the school they can't avoid, but there's certainly operational expenses that increase when the students are there, and they simply. Aren't there for almost half the school year. So they must have an idea of how that's gonna impact them, what kind of excess they're gonna have, but I would certainly expect that to be. Applied in full to their next year's budget before they start asking for that kind of increase. But I think people need to know that a seven point nine percent increase is what the school committee has approved, and they feel is appropriate. Which would mean drastic cuts to all of our town departments other, otherwise.
And if I'm correct, Greg, seven point nine percent is increase in the budget, not the increase to Barry's assessment.
That was our.
Our assessment's even higher.
I believe that was our total increase to the school.
Okay.
Our, our, I, I thought that was our fixed and assessed combined, that we were gonna see a seven point nine percent increase. But even so, if it's higher, it's even worse, but I'm saying it, it's, it's way out of line, um, which is what I argued last year. You know, when you look at our percent increase in budget, if we have a three hundred thousand dollar increase in our budget, and the school's getting. Fifty-five percent of our budget, then they should see a hundred and sixty-five thousand dollar increase, not an eight hundred plus thousand dollar increase. They're just completely way out of line with what they should be expecting for an increase from us. They need to figure out how to tighten their budget and cut something, because they can't just keep saying, this is what we want. This is how we see it, and what we'd like to have, and what, what fits us. They really need to start, you know, working with these municipalities, and this is why we had the whole issue last year, and this is why. The other towns have reached out to us to make our, our committee, which we still haven't really formed, to discuss the school's budget, we need to get together with our. Neighboring towns and regional towns and discuss this, because they wanna increase this from everybody, and some of them are pretty steep. And the, the towns just can't afford it, we cannot keep doing this, we shouldn't have to have this discussion every year. My opinion. Yep. Heather?
Uh, just a couple things to answer here, going back for a little bit. So, uh, stabilization currently has, looks like we've got about eight hundred K total in stabilization. Um, give or take, I don't have the free cash numbers, looking that up as well. Um, other answers, so Greg, I'm not entirely sure that was the change of the municipal law. The municipal law that I was thinking of when it came to talking about one twelfth. Actually had to do with the municipalities, so the law piece. Um, so this is KP Law, KP Law is one of the largest municipal school firms in the state of Massachusetts. And they're one of the ones who's doing a great job of compiling all the stuff. So on their website, you see here, they actually give an update from that municipal legislation act. Um, and they cite to here about one twelfth, so this actually was talking about, um, chapter forty-four, section thirty-one. Where a town or district's unable to approve a budget for the next fiscal year by June thirtieth due to a public health or safety emergency and delays. Um. And unable to hold a town meeting, the D O R is authorized to approve expenditures from any appropriate funder account of. An amount sufficient for the operation during the month of July, not less than one twelfth of the total budget approved. Uh, for the most recent fiscal year, they actually pulled that from the legislation that's already in place for. Um, regional, regional districts, so school districts that are unable to approve their budget currently, the law is that they operate on one twelfth budget. It's a one twelfth of the year wire is the amount, it usually has to be approved by DESI. So the state law is based on the regional school piece, so unless I missed something, and I'm happy to double check and see if I did. I believe it goes toward last year's approved budget and not anything to do with the school committee's recommended number. The other number that was in question, um, that you guys are talking about had to do with. Amount of the request for the fiscal year that's up and coming, and I just wanna make sure I have that information correct as well. So ClearGov is what we're, we're using this year Andrew had set up, um, in order to follow up with. Um, in order to follow the budgets process, so Quabin Assessments, uh, their current. Request was six million fifty-five thousand seven twenty-nine to the town, which is a six point six-two percent increase. Um, to the town of Barry for this fiscal year. I also spoke finally with Sheila, she connected with me, the superintendent of schools on Friday. And what she had indicated was that this was not their final product, that they were in works of looking at this. Um, I also inquired relative to what currently they're not expanding. Um, with the schools being closed, they said they're still incurring quite a few expenses, because all of their staff is being paid, everyone's still working. And administrative professionals are still utilizing some portions of the buildings, and they're using two schools for serving lunches. But she also indicated that, you know, the custodial services are kinda wrapping up, because they've concluded with all the monetization and all of those pieces. Um, so I did ask her if they're gonna start potentially, uh, looking at the possibility of either layoffs or furloughs for some. Staff moving forward if the schools were to close. So, now that we're at the close of the year, I'm wondering if they'll pursue that. Some other districts in the state of Massachusetts have looked at, um, reducing staffing, closing some things, and also. Taking those savings and shares and moving them to the following year for an offset of the, um, upcoming expenditures. Well, I don't know if that helps, but I just wanted to cover those pieces, because I know.
Yeah, I, I think what I was looking at is I went through the, some of the laws the schools cited for making their budget. And that referred back to the, the state laws and also the COVID amendments made by the governor. Um, I apologize for not having those at, at the ready, but I was very sure. The way it read, that was for the school district, that they could, um, propose a budget for what they feel. Is the required operational budget, and that definition of required is not, you know, spelled out. Um, so it's whatever the school committee deems as required budget, as long as they pass that budget and send it to the towns. By the date which they had successfully done, I believe it was prior to April twenty-third or something. So they fulfilled their obligation to notify the towns that they approved the budget. So that budget, um, she may say they're gonna adjust it, but that's the official one that they put forward. It would fall under this one twelfth rule, I believe. Um, but what I can do, Heather, is I'll go back and read those, um, this week. And get in contact with you directly and, and, um, see what I found, if we can. Get into that more, the details, but, but it, it seemed to be that they're trying to meet a deadline. All that said, if we go ahead and we do have our annual town meeting as scheduled in June. Then it's moot, then it's just normal budget season.
So, I was. So I was able to find, um, can you guys see my screen now?
Nope.
No. Oh, you see me, oh, that's good, okay, let me try the right button again. All right, how about now?
Yep.
Okay, so this is, uh, chapter fifty-six, Acts of Twenty Twenty Additional Municipal Relief Legislation. So KP Law again, um, they have some great guidance. So Regional School District interim budgets, if a member municipalities of a regional school district are unable to vote to approve its budget before June thirtieth. The section permits a suspension of the normal regional school district budgeting process as set forth. Instead, upon notification by the regional school district of a lack of budget, DESI. Is authorized to certify an amount sufficient for the operation of the regional district starting July one. And in amounts not less than one twelfth of the region district's total annual budget FY twenty. Similar sums shall be certified for each successive month, month until a budget is ultimately adopted and approved. This provision in the act, uh, parallels similar authority provided towns under section five of previously adopted legislation. So it's not saying, it, it's saying it could be more than one twelfth, but it minimum needs to be one twelfth of the prior year, so it's essentially level funding the school district. Um, with, you know, potential adjustments by DESI for the oversight.
Yeah, I don't trust DESI though. They're a state agency, and the more they get the local community to give them money, the less they have to give later. So I could see them upping the budget. In that direction they so chose.
There was something I read that tied to them. It might have been in that last little line that said according to Mass General Law, what or whatever of the twenty twenty. You, you had to go back and read the governor's actual law that he wrote, not, not the KP Law, the KP Law says, yes, minimum of a one twelfth. But when you read the actual state law, I believe it, it said, if there was a budget approved by the school prior to April twenty-third. And then, within so many days, that had to be communicated to the member town, which it was. That that was locked in, and that's what they were gonna go for the twelve of.
Gotcha.
Once again, I, I don't have in front of me, it's possibly, I'm, I'm parroting it wrong right now, but I, I would doubt it. Um, I will look it up and, and I'll go back and reread those laws that apply to it again, but that's what really. Rotted out, I wanna make sure we're having the town meeting on time, because then that will become moot.
Understood.
The, the issue of their budget, where it is number-wise, is still very valid, and I think it's too high. And I think, um, you know, Claire, the finance committee, as well as the select board, we, we need to. Try to communicate to the school, we, you, you can't keep shoving these budgets up that are gonna make us cut the rest of the town departments by five percent.
I have a question, I brought it up today at the meeting. Because I've heard rumors around that the school district is not paying all of their contracts. For one, the transportation contract. And I talked to Jean, we pay our quarterly bill. Now, if we're paying our quarterly bill, with the schools closed down and a lot, they must be not spending quite a bit of money. Where is that money going? Will it come back to us? You know what I'm saying?
It's, it's equivalent to their free, it's equivalent to our free cash, they call it excess and deficiency, Claire. It's the same as our free cash, and it will be there, it's already been budgeted to them.
But they are contracted to pay their bills, and they're not.
Right, Matt.
I don't wanna say this is what Q R S D is doing, but I do know. Um, whether it's the schools or even the library branches, they're spending money in other ways to try to reach out to people. That they normally didn't spend when people would come to them. Um, I believe one of the things the schools recently did, and it may have been a redirect to the budget. Is they spent money on some of the Chromebooks to try to get laptops or tablets or whatever out to students that didn't own any. So they could participate in remote.
I knew they had done that.
So they may have saved money in some places. But I'm not surprised that they spent most of that in other places, for whatever reasons, I'm not even gonna try to justify or. Even belittle, I don't know enough of the details and the reasoning why. But I wouldn't be surprised if you find that where they saved, they probably spent somewhere else in order to do their best. To, uh, continue some level of education for those that couldn't come to the buildings.
Well, this is something I wanna ask them when they come into our finance meeting, you know. Where did the money go that you were spending on such and such?
I think it's a legitimate question.
You know.
Uh, I'm sure you know.
Money in there.
When I. When I say they have certain fixed versus variable operational costs, like any manufacturing company would, you know. There's certain things they're gonna be paying on that school, and, and while they may have the heat set lower when students aren't there. They may save some money on oil, so that operational cost may go down, but it's not gonna be huge. The light bill should be lower, so their electric consumption should go down. But if they aren't still paying the staff, the teachers, and the custodial services, um, and if they're still putting meals out, running to get cafeteria staff. There's not gonna be a large drop-off, large drop-off in their funds, but there should be some. Um.
What about their transportation?
I was gonna say.
That must be a big one.
But we're probably.
Between all four schools.
I believe the transportation, unless I'm wrong, um, is done on an annual contract. So they're contracted to supply the transportation service for the year.
And they're supposed to pay their bills.
Right, and, and just because we're not using it, I don't think it's gonna excuse us from not paying the bill. Um.
But then, from what I've heard, they're not paying.
There, well, unless you have the contract. You can't really say whether they should be paying them or not.
Yeah.
An annually bid contract, but it still is likely a contract that's paid for services performed. So whether it's monthly or quarterly, they'll receive an invoice. But if they've not been there for two months because we've shut the schools down since February.
Yeah.
They're not paying the invoice because services weren't performed. But it's arguable, they don't necessarily know. Where other costs are gonna sneak up on them, so they didn't potentially immediately redistribute the money yet. Because like you had just mentioned Claire, I'd love to have cable distributed through the whole town, but.
Yeah.
You do have to figure out what are the unknown costs we don't see yet. So I wouldn't be surprised, at least from my perspective. It's been just over a month since I pretty much been working straight from home. But that's only a month, it feels like it's been six months because I just am stir crazy, I don't do well with this. But it's only been a month. And it's only been two months since the entire state has actually been affected by the economy at all.
Yeah.
This has not been a huge effect on the budget yet. It's what's coming that I think we're more concerned with than what's happening.
Yeah.
And so I think it's easy to kinda. Take what we see coming and apply it to what just happened and it quite hasn't built up that big yet. Because it's only been a month and a half, two months tops. That our economies have been affected and our school operations have been affected and things like that, so. Um, the numbers don't quite fit what I think, at least I was imagining when we started the conversation and then I thought about it's like. Well, it's really not been that long, it hasn't been a whole school year with no transport.
Although it will be now where we close the schools till the twenty ninth of June.
Well, it'll be.
That last quarter.
Or whatever that. Time is, because I forget when they starting in because I have no kids. So like, I kinda lose track.
I could see both sides of it, they could have a contract where they may have to pay. But where they're not just rejecting the service that was shut down by the state because of the COVID. There certainly may be a valid reason not to pay and or pay and have it reimbursed. Um, under a federal act because of the COVID.
Yeah, if that COVID comes through.
And it's more likely for that to be effective that we would have to not pay so the bus company can have a COVID impact. You see what I'm saying? If the school pays, then the bus company's had no impact, the school's paid it, no one gets any any reimbursement. If the school doesn't pay it, the bus company will have an impact and may be federally refundable. And that will leave the school with excess money. But i- in either event, it's it's kind of, it's not, frankly, it's not our business, this is the school committee and superintendent's business. So we don't need to worry about this too much because it's really outside of our purview, except to ask them. What happened, what'd you get for money? So we.
Yeah, because it's our money.
How it plays out is is between the school committee and the superintendent. The government and the and the busing service, so I I don't wanna spend too much more time on that issue.
So I think we got a good start on QRSD type budget stuff. We're um thankfully still just in the middle of April, so we've got another month before we've got to finalize our. Intentions via the finance committee. Um, and hopefully uh we'll have enough information by then to feel comfortable presenting something to the town come June. Um, the next item was finance committee input, so I didn't know if you had anything specific Claire you wanna add? Or just contribute to the discussion we already had?
I don't think there's anything else, I might have more for you once the meeting's over Thursday night. When we go over things.
So we'll we'll keep a space if you're, if you were to accept the invitation for you to come back to the next meeting.
Mm-hmm.
Can you kinda give us a little update of where the finance committee's at and?
Yeah.
Pull up on some of these items.
Yeah.
I really appreciate you attending and participating Claire.
Very important.
Um. So the, unless we have more discussion on finance. Um, we've got just a couple items that potentially we could follow up on. It's it's nothing major, I think, that I'm overly worried about right now. And that's just some of the Henry Woods maintenance items, I know that Heather's been working on it, but I'm not. Identifying this as the priority over something else right now. But if you guys would like, we'll see if Heather's got something to throw out there and bring up for us. Go ahead Heather.
Sure, so just really. So where we are is um, we were able to get the uninterrupted power supply we talked about last week. Our last meeting, um, and the Henry Woods building for the HVAC system, so now every time we lose power, it flickers. It doesn't reset the whole system. So um, so far I haven't heard anything, but I also haven't got any alarms um saying anything was crashing, so that's a good sign. Um, of course, then again, you know, it's one of those things where you have a backup power supply, so now we won't lose power. So we won't know if it's actually doing a thing, but um, we'll consider it a good luck charm if that's all it is. Um, the other thing, we had a little bit of water inside the building by the elevator door. Uh, last week when it was heavily torrential downpouring. Um, we were able to have our custodian Tony who happened to be cleaning at the police department that evening swing by on his way home. He took a look at it for us, sent pictures, he sent that out to each of the board members. Um, and what he thinks happened was where the two um. Two roofs connect together, Greg, let me know if you know something more because I think you had stopped by the next day. Um, where the two roofs connected together, the water was leaking through, was his best guess. It was coming down in that little room right in front of where the elevator is, that main door that's entered. At the handicap accessible door there. Um, we don't really know what was causing it, his best guess, I think, was that it was horizontal rain. Um, it was only there, it wasn't getting into the electrical panel, it was coming down the wall a little bit and puddles showing. Greg, did you have any other thoughts on that? Because I think you had stopped by the next day.
This is the first I've heard of it, didn't seen any pictures and I knew nothing about it, so I.
You you didn't get the text messages I sent you with the pictures?
No.
Oh, okay.
But I I have no idea, but certainly if we had driving horizontal rain. Um. It it's not like something suddenly changes on the roof or or and the flash in the building, so, you know. Possible for horizontal rain, I I can look, but I. Unless we have a recurring issue, I wouldn't be too concerned.
It's the first time I've seen is that had actually occurred. Um, that Ellen or Tony knew of, because Ellen was the one who had pointed it out. Uh, when she was leaving that night, but anyways, so we had him take a look, everything looked fine the next morning.
Yeah, the possibility is a piece of flash or something's blown out of place and then would be something we'd have to repair, but. I'll I'll go look when I can.
Okay. Um, but so I just wanted to make sure everyone's aware of that, so you guys know it's up there. Um, there's nothing else really going on with that stuff, we did have a email. Uh, from a resident relative to a couple of our flagpoles, we have flagpoles that are lit at night with, I believe, solar panels. Uh, we do have an electrician just when they get the chance to come out and take a look and see if it's something we can repair and if so, what the cost is. Uh, C and D has done a great job contacting the electrician, um, we just haven't heard back yet, so we'll see. Um, when we hear back what the amount is and I'll bring it back to the board and see how we wanna proceed from there. Um, there's no other major repair updates, we still have to get that door taken care of, but right now where a lot of the businesses are operating. It's been a little bit hard to get someone else to come out and take a look. Uh, Matt, I don't know if you were able to stop by yet, I know that was something that you had on your list that you were gonna just see if you had any thoughts.
No, I I wanted to get out there, but then um. After kinda my health issue that I was dealing with, I wanted to kinda. Just kinda hide in my house a little longer, reduce my uh out in the world exposure, um. By the end of this week, I I feel confident that I've kinda cleared that process.
Okay.
Um, so I do expect to go out there, um, my initial thought is. We can, we can do a handyman type repair that will make that door operable. We can look into at that point whether we think we need to invest in a a door frame and or door replacement. Or operable is good enough for now and we'll 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 budget in a a bigger project because. If I'm correct, that door frame may be built into the masonry. Not just with wood sleepers lagged into the masonry. I'm not a hundred percent sure, I'd have to look at it again, it looks like a a a standard metal knockdown frame, but I I gotta check again. Um, otherwise, I was just thinking it would literally be a a simple grind it down with the the rusted uh swollen up. Um, at least the door frame part and can do a a simple, almost like just bond or repair just to. Again, buy us a few months until we can look at a bigger repair, but at least the door's opening and closing and. We're not quite concerned with security or other issues at that point. By the end of the. By the beginning of next week, I I should have a chance to take a look at that and let you know what I think.
That's that's all I have for building stuff, the only other update I had was on Memorial Day, I could wait on that if you want to come back to me.
Um. Might as well go ahead and bring it up now.
So I was able to have a conversation with Tony today, our veterans agent. Um, so where they are with Memorial Day is that they are going to be looking at going to the sites where they have all the reefs. So that includes South Berry, Saint Joseph Cemetery, Glen Valley Cemetery in North Park. Um, they're gonna go there on Memorial Day, mostly it's just gonna be the folks from the American Legion, so about sixty people. Um, they will have the flags, the rifles, the commander, the pastor, the bugler. Um, in order to play tops. Uh, I also offered them the opportu- if they didn't have someone who could, I told them I would make myself available. Um, with any precautions I needed, uh, to be able to record it on Zoom. Um, so that we can actually broadcast it on YouTube. Uh, for people to see and later on public access TV, so people have that um ability. Uh, they have masks and they will, if they need them and they'll also maintain um distance apart from each other. And they're also currently working to see if they can um find someone to assist and maybe communicate over Zoom doing the National Anthem. But they still have that feature as well, but so as of right now, it's not really a public type event, they're keeping it pretty small. Um, unless something, unless something changes, the governor's orders could change and. Um, could increase gathering sizes by the end of May, we'll see, but as of right now, that's Tony's current plan.
Okay, stay informed, um. I I would um, I'll leave it up to the other board members. But come that time, I would like to probably also have a presence involved. So if you could reach out to Tony and or Dennis and let him know that. At least one, if not two or three of the board of selectmen, we all, I think, agree we can maintain our distancing if we need to to. Do it the right way. But I I do believe the board would be, yeah, I see the other two members kinda thumbs up, so. You could express to the uh American Legion that we are interested in participating in what manner that we're able to, that'd be appreciated.
Will too.
Thank you. Plus, hopefully that's gonna be a beautiful day and another, I'll just be so thankful to not be in my house. Um. Next item that comes up, we've got a a series of. Uh. Well, we had a caught some correspondence, but one specific to our Children's Mental Health Week. Um, it was brought to our attention. I have to admit, it was until we received the letter, it was the first time I had heard about it. And what I would like to do before I go any further is actually pull it up. Alright, this is what we had received from. Mila Palmo, uh, from the Parent Professional Advocacy League. And this is the Massachusetts Family Voice for Children's Mental Health. Um. It states that, I'm not gonna read the whole thing, so I'm just jumping kinda into a a couple bits and pieces, it's uh. Every year, we are celebrating Children's Mental Health Week on the first full week of May, May third through ninth this year. And are requesting local landmarks and cities en masse to be part of raising awareness about children's mental health needs. The importance of working towards more inclusive communities together by breaking the stigma. Um. What they're asking is various municipalities and other state agencies and state level uh representatives. To kinda make a proclamation, identifying the weak and the various reasons why. Children's mental health is something that um should be raised to our attention at a higher level. Um. I haven't, this is now on the table, none of the board of selectmen have talked about this together or not. Um. I I recognize children's mental health uh is important. Um. Some people might not appreciate what I'm gonna say, and I'll I'll be very careful, I'm really not trying to offend anybody. I don't know why it's any different than mental health for anybody of any age. So I do have a difficulty when everybody's special group needs a special time. But I have no kids, so there's a big reason why I'm probably not the right person to bring this up. So I'm just putting it on the table as kinda the devil's advocate, everybody can hate me now. And let some other board of selectmen save me from the hole I just dug. Or bury me with it, that's okay. But if any other member would like to talk about this, feel free.
I think you'll find that specifically for children's me- mental health. Um. As we're adults, we have some idea how to cope with simple things as frustration and anger in different social circumstances. That children don't have the faculties to deal with yet, they don't even know how to identify when they're getting angry. So they can typically act out and harm others or hurt themselves. Do things that are destructive when they feel frustration and they don't know how to identify that they're even frustrated. So i- it's it's very important that kids, especially if they have behavior or or learning issues. They they're not trying to be bad, they just, they have stress, frustration or other concerns or anxieties. They don't even comprehend that they have something going on. So it's it's very important um to identify that, you know. We know if we're stressed, we go have have a beer or you talk to your friend and do what you gotta do. Some people go talk to a counselor on a regular basis, kids can't make that identification to realize it's stressed, they just are. And they act out, so it's really important that people identify. Um, and this is the perfect example, Matt, because since you don't have kids, you've never seen it, I've seen it with my own kids. Um, that they act out, you find out there's something going on that's bugging them, you take them to a counselor and you you find out where it's coming from. And then they give the kids the tools they need to identify when they're angry, how to cope with it, who they can talk to. And that's just one small example that, you know, the the issues of mental health as we know for adults, there's a plethora of things. But we can still identify there's a need for us when we feel stressed or feel anxious or have a problem. Um, we can realize when we're depressed or when we're anxious, kids have no comprehension of what any of that is. If that makes sense. It's very important to that we pay attention to that, that the kids are um not stigmatized for feeling. Angry or or acting out, that that they get listened to and and people try to help identify. On what's going on, because when the kids are behaving that way, something's troubling them and they don't know how to communicate. It's like an infant crying. They're not crying to piss you off, they're crying because they're wet, they're hungry, they got a cramp, they need to burp, who knows? But there's a reason it's happening, we just gotta figure out what it is.
Got you. Dylan, you got something you wanna add to that?
Yeah, um, I mean, of course, I I would agree with Greg on all those points and. Um, I don't know what the town of Berry signing a proclamation uh. Will will really do to make children's mental health a more of a mainstream topic, but. Uh, no, it is our duty to, as citizens, to uh advocate for the most vulnerable amongst us. And I'd say that children, especially children with uh additional needs like mental health issues, would be pretty high on the list of the most vulnerable amongst us, so. Um, I appreciate the the work of this uh group.
Touch on that a li- a little bit too, with, you know, the. We can say we don't know what our acknowledging it really does to help, but we're willing to do it, but the fact that Matt has had no idea. Of how this might relate to children, that that's what acknowledging this is all about. Um, acknowledging that these issues do exist for kids, because most people never give it a thought. And they say, ah, they're kids, so what, what do they count? I mean, you know. And that's why it is important, very important, so I don't want us to just say, yeah, we'll kinda go along with that, I I hope you guys understand. Um, and I've had four kids and many. Um and I've had four kids and many stepkids and uh you know, it's important, I'm sure Claire can agree. She's had kids and grandkids and, you know. Um for people that are unaware of it, I think it's important for them to understand that, you know, these kids have these issues too, and the kids don't know.
Um just looking to see, we do have. Now I just gotta find it. There's a draft proclamation. That was presented with kind of the um. Somewhat generic, um that they were, they shared with the email that they were asking everybody to kinda read and kinda make the proclamation. Ah, here it is, there it is, thank you. If uh you would do me the favor, Dylan, do you mind reading this proclamation out? Or do we agree as a board that we will make this proclamation? I'm comfortable with it.
I I would like to make a motion that we uh proclaim. May third through ninth twenty twenty as Children's Mental Health Awareness Week.
I'd second that motion.
I call for a vote.
Oh Sullivan, yes.
Clark, yes.
Matt Urban, yes.
And I would still ask that um if Dylan would read it, because I I think the whole idea of of asking. Us to do this is to do exactly what we're doing, is to put it out there so people can hear it and understand it. And maybe hear about it for the first time. Um in the statistics they've given this are pretty important, it gives people something to, hopefully, they're listening and think about, and that's the whole idea of doing this.
Or or without further ado, I'll read the proclamation from the town of, for the town of Barry. Whereas the citizens of Barry value their health and mental health and that of their families. Therefore, they are proud to support observances such as Children's Mental Health Week. And whereas seventeen percent of children and youth ages six through seventeen live with a mental health condition. And fifty percent of all lifetime instances of mental illness begin before age fourteen. And even some children and youth with the most intense needs and some who are insured may not receive services. And whereas children and youth with mental health needs are in elementary, middle, and high school are more likely to be bullied, absent, suspended, expelled. Or fail to graduate, and whereas recognizing the early warnings, uh early warning signs of mental health needs and obtaining the necessary support. Assistance and treatment gives children and youth better opportunities to lead full and productive lives at home, in schools, and in their communities. And whereas the involvement and partnership of family members in the assessment and treatment of you. Children and youth is essential to positive outcomes, and whereas our nation's future depends on the health and well-being of its families and their children. And whereas Children's Mental Health Week was developed by families of children with emotional, behavioral, and mental health needs. To focus on the needs of their children and families, in celebrating this year's theme, quote, vision for health and happiness. It is fitting to increase public awareness among all Barry citizens of this important issue. Now, therefore, we, the Barry Select Board, do hereby proclaim. May third through ninth two thousand twenty as Children's Mental Health Awareness Week.
Very good.
Thank you very much, Dylan.
Of course.
And I appreciate the uh discussion, gentlemen.
As do I.
Anybody else uh have anything they would like to uh make comment regarding this? Okay.
Hey Matt, by your chief.
Yes.
I just, I I agree with you guys signing this, I think um we we see this on the ambulance quite a bit. We we deal with a lot of this on the uh EMS side, and I know the police deal with it a lot on their side, so. I think a- as far as Barry goes, we we do see a an increase of this over some of the other towns, so. I I like just to say thank you for signing this.
You got it, appreciate the input, Bob. Appreciate it. Bob, you still on there?
Yes.
You feel like giving the uh selectmen a rundown on some of our fire activities last week? They'd probably be interested to know.
Um yeah, so um. You know, ambulance calls have been a little bit slow, but we we have transported uh a. Couple uh, like I said today, uh I said it earlier today, we transported a uh positive COVID nineteen patient. Um we got notified by the hospital, this was a call last week. Ambulance calls have been somewhat down. Because uh most of, like I said earlier, most of the patients that typically go to the hospital for. Not true um life-threatening emergencies are being advised to, you know, stay home. So the people we've taken have been, you know, pretty legitimate emergency calls. Um we did, I'm sure everybody's aware, on Thursday, uh Quavin Liquors uh caught on fire. At three thirty or three nineteen, I believe, actually, in the afternoon. Um fortunately, everybody got out of the building, there were no injuries. We were notified quickly, we had a pretty fast response, we were able to stop the fire spread. The fire was spreading down the roof line of Quavin Plaza towards Driven and the Barbershop and the Barry Foods, so. Uh luckily, the firefighters did a did a really good job, they were able to stop the fire, contain the damage, pretty much to the liquor store. Um a couple of the businesses suffered some smoke damage, but uh that was limited. Uh we had another actual fire this morning, we had a micay on fire at Dunkin Donuts, um. You know, there was very little damage, but had the potential to be pretty bad, so again, been a, it's been a busy week on the fireside. Numerous fire alarms, common monoxide alarms, been very fortunate. I don't know if it's because of COVID nineteen, but we had um pretty large turnout of firefighters, which for a small town. Is uh not too common nowadays, we had twenty-three people on three at three thirty on Thursday for the fire at Quavin Plaza. Which, you know, was a testament, so the town should be pretty proud of their fire department, I think they did a good job and they showed everybody. That our equipment and our training has paid off, cause like I said, that could have been a pretty substantial loss of the town of Barry had we. Had we not been able to stop the fire and and lost the whole plaza.
Thank you very much to all of you. Thank you.
And I just want, you know, give a give a props to all the guys that have been showing up. It's been a pretty stressful time, I think, for everybody with COVID nineteen. And I know a lot of the uh E M Ps, the paramedics, the firefighters, it's been especially stressful. Just dealing with some of the patients, knowing that they're being exposed to COVID nineteen. But they, you know, they're still showing up, they're still going on the calls, they're putting themselves in harm's way, I think, so. I think it's uh, you know, the town should be pretty proud of their their people.
I agree, and I am. And the staffing numbers, as as Chief said, especially these calls, people aren't hiding and staying away from, the guys are all coming out. They're all stepping up and doing their job and uh and no one's trying to stay at home and stay away from anything, or they're all doing what they said they would do and. And coming when the tones go off, which is nice to see.
Well, thank you very much. I think we only got a couple items left, and then uh we'll see how the meeting goes from there. Uh next item that I recall, I think we've addressed everything, getting down to it, it's just we had some. Meeting minutes for April sixth, twenty twenty meeting, have you gentlemen had a chance to review?
I I have, yes.
I have not, but um if you both have, you can certainly go forward without me looking them up.
It's 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 one meeting, but there is a paragraph that was. That you, I don't wanna say was quoting, but trying to paraphrase some of the stuff you said. So I wouldn't necessarily wanna vote on approving it till you felt comfortable that.
Let me find it then, I know there.
Towards the end of the meeting minutes, I think, is where the item that was coming to my mind was. I thought important for you to have a chance to review.
Do you have um. Do you have a date for that email where they were in for me, so I could find them easier?
Let me see.
Eric, I put them on the screen for you. Matt, do you know where they fall?
Were they from eleven thirty this morning?
No, would have been from last week. Matt, do you remember what page they're on, what section, what what the topic was?
Yeah. It was. We're getting there, we're getting there.
But on the draft agenda?
Oh, I thought it was almost at the very end.
Okay.
Selectmen's report.
So go down further?
Yeah, it's the second last page of the meeting minutes. It'd be the last paragraph of, it would be section seven B.
Right here.
It was pretty much Greg's selectmen's report, so I didn't want us to approve it without him feeling like that was comfortably expressing his. It is? I'm looking for it. I got my uh, the stuff in the way here. Oh, she she put it on the screen for you.
Yeah, Jason just told me here, um.
Sorry. Also, don't mind tabling it if you really wanna just have your time to review it, not feel rushed.
Yeah, that's fine.
Alright. Do we have a motion to accept the meeting minutes?
Yeah, I'm moved that we accept the meeting minutes of April sixth. It's two thousand twenty.
Second.
Alright, I call for a vote.
Sullivan, yes.
Clark, yes.
Matt Urban, yes. I think the only thing left on the agenda is kinda the uh blank selectmen report items. I have nothing to add this week, uh Greg, do you have anything you wanna?
No, I was just gonna update a little about the fire department's activity, but I had Chief do that, so um. You know, and I already talked earlier about the the changing numbers I saw on the news today. You know, I just reiterate, don't panic, you know, but I think we're alright. Just gonna let this play out, and if the numbers diminish, we'll get back to normal.
Dylan, you got anything to like that?
Uh I'm not gonna make a selectman report this evening.
Heather, do you have anything left that you would like to express before we close up the meeting?
I don't think so at this time, unless there's any other questions the board has that I can respond.
I'm good right now, uh. Before we close up completely, I would like to put it out there that um. This would be the time to have public comment or make any comments on something that was mentioned earlier in the meeting. It looks like we have two people that called in to attend. I think they may both be part of the Rogowski family or not. Anybody else here interested in uh, got anything to say? If not. I'll see if we have a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Alright, I will then uh, I'll second it. Call for a vote?
Oh Sullivan, yes.
Clark, yes.
Matt Urban, yes. Thank you all for participating and attending, I appreciate it.
Alright, everyone, stay safe.
Thank you, everybody.
See you later.